Hello, welcome to the Coco Vidvid Show. My name is Cody and I will be your host. My guest today, I'm very honoured to have on, has been a city council member of the Lord of St Norbert in St River since 2018. He was the deputy mayor of Winnipeg for two years and he's currently a chairperson on the Winnipeg Police Board. My guest today is Marcus Chambers. Thank you so much for joining me, councillor Chambers. I am very honoured to have you on.
Well, thank you for inviting me. I'm very much looking forward to having some very lively discussions and sharing a little bit about myself and about my role as a city councillor.
Let's get right into that then. I like to talk about where people have come from, what their professional experience has been like, both before the pandemic and as a result of the pandemic. So can you tell us, how long have you been working in public service? And what was your career path that brought you to where you are today?
A great question. I started basically while I was still in university, working in community services. I worked youth corrections at the Seven Oaks Centre for Youth. And just prior to that, working for Winnipeg Receiving Resources, which were group homes in the city that were dedicated to kids at risk or youth at risk. And got on with the youth centre, as I said, the Seven Oaks Youth Centre. And worked there while I was in university. And upon graduating, I got on with the Department of Family Services, where I worked for about 12 years, leaving there as a policy analyst. And going over to the Department of Labour and Immigration, where a new programme was just starting called the Provincial Nominee Programme. And the Provincial Nominee Programme brought skilled workers and business investments to the province. And it was a great opportunity for me to become much more culturally diverse, in the sense that we were bringing in skilled workers from all over the world. So I had a great opportunity to travel fairly extensively throughout this planet and visiting different countries, experiencing different cultures, different backgrounds, different education systems, different employment systems and of course the food. And it really helped to shape and prepare me for the role I am in now as a city councillor. Of course, through that all, I spent a great time, a great deal of time volunteering in the community, whether it was with my sons, in terms of their academic or their recreation activities. I volunteered at their schools, volunteered at the community clubs, sat on a variety of different boards and foundations. And again, that was an awesome experience in preparing me for my role as a city councillor.
You mentioned food. What were some of the best meals that you had when you travelled?
Well, I mean, we spent a lot of time throughout pretty much every country in Europe, almost every country in Europe, and quite a few countries in Asia. My last trip was in South America and Brazil. So everything, I remember going into a Hong Kong restaurant. And it must have been one of those restaurants that only the locals go to, because when I walked in, it's like everybody dropped their fork and looked up and it's awesome, you know? But my wife and I, who joined me subsequently on this trip, we sat down and we ordered off the menu. And I think we got the only English speaking person in that restaurant that was able to, we were able to order our meal. It was one of the best meals I've ever had, in terms of it being fresh out the kitchen, hot, tasty, and it was a great meal. And I mean, it wasn't a five star type of dining experience, but from food satisfaction, certainly so.
I think one of my favourite Chinese meals especially is when I went to Hong Kong with my parents, who are originally from Hong Kong. And yeah, I had a noodle bowl from a restaurant that was literally a hole in the wall. There's literally just like a wall and a little bit of a cavern. And then like a steam, just steam pouring out of it and just packed to the rim of people. And you sit down, you're uncomfortable, and then you get the bowl of noodles and you forget everything else because it's the most amazing food you've ever eaten.
Well, I tell you what I say in terms of dining, it's not quite five star. The napkin was a roll of toilet paper. And I didn't care because the food was so good. If you want to eat good food, go where the locals go because they know best.
So getting back to your work life before COVID happened, what did you do on a normal week on the job before COVID?
There was really nothing normal about it. Upon being elected, I was so honoured to be appointed as deputy mayor for the city of Winnipeg. And that came with a lot of awesome responsibilities as well. But also sitting on three different standing policy committees, as well as, I was vice chair of the Winnipeg Police Board at that time, as well as vice chair of the Human Rights Committee of Council. So quite busy in terms of just all of the boards and standing policy committees that I was sitting on while serving as deputy mayor. Plus, the added piece to that was all of the casework that you're really acquainting yourself with, based on calls from residents, dealing with developers, dealing with the calls about garbage pickup or snow removal. You know, so it was quite overwhelming. You know, I liken it to drinking from a fire hose. But shortly, you know, within the first three, four months of seeing what the pace was, I adjusted quickly and making sure that I always had lines of communication. And you notice that in terms of social media, that I'm very much engaged with the community. I try to stay very active, seven days a week, usually 12 to 14 hours a day, trying to respond as quickly as possible to residents' concerns. And that's something that I committed to when I was campaigning and getting out newsletters, posting information on my website. It was a matter of adjusting to the quick pace of the job. Now that I'm on less standing policy committees, but chair of the Winnipeg Police Board, it is still that fast pace. I have a great assistant in place that does a lot of the casework. We're very much aligned in terms of our thought processes and our symmetry in terms of getting communication out. So he's helped me out quite a bit and it's just a matter of improving on a daily basis and how we can increase transparency and efficiency in communication.
As you mentioned, like your involvement in social media, I'm very impressed with how active you are on it and how much you seem to be responsive and you're there when people have issues and when they call you, when they mention you in like a post. Are you handling that yourself right now?
Yeah, I would say 90%, 95% of it, you know, because a lot of it I do post on weekends on some of these issues. But my assistant is very, more so the email side of it, my assistant will take care of. And you know, doesn't have to seek a lot of input from me because he's so aligned to the community as well. On some of the more meteor issues, yes, I will get involved with. But from the day-to-day routine questions that come up with regards to an issue that a resident has raised, certainly those get forwarded to me for me to provide a response to, but for the most part, he's able to respond accordingly.
Does it feel like things have changed with COVID now with how you work, you know, just operationally? What happened to community events that I assume you were participating in beforehand? How has that changed?
Yeah, and that's a total 180 in terms of, you know, and I'm still waiting to see what my life will be like post-pandemic, in the sense that when we got into COVID, I was as deputy mayor and attending a lot of functions after hours and representing the mayor and the city on different events. So certainly since I've become chair of the Winnipeg Police Board and stopped serving as deputy mayor, we haven't had any social events. So I don't know what my life will be like in that regard. In terms of all of the meetings, and I really do miss the in-person meetings, because there's such a great opportunity to network and to have offline conversations that aren't necessarily translated into Zoom call. You know, especially if you're meeting with multiple people, you want to have little breakout sessions and talk about different issues. Certainly my first year when I attended the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, that was taking place in Quebec City in 2019, we had some great conversations about issues that are common throughout each municipality and how different municipalities and cities are dealing with different issues that you might not have implemented here yet. So it's an opportunity to come back based on those conversations, do some additional research and due diligence around those issues, and then perhaps craft a motion that we can implement here and operationalise here. So you don't get that in a Zoom call. And so I'm looking forward to getting back to those types of meetings and social interactions, where we can have those offline discussions and network and all of those in-person type of activities that really have a better outcome in terms of how you're going to proceed on different issues.
Yeah, and I think a lot of people can relate to that even just like who work in an office. Once I have had discussion about, I've come from a software development background or working in software development offices. And I am always very constantly attuned and aware of the culture of the offices that I work in and how that translates to productivity and idea formation. And what you described there is exactly just like these, just having people, like-minded people with smart ideas in the same space. You know, it's, you don't need, you don't need an agenda a lot of times. You have these collisions, you have these interactions, they're just like these happenstance collisions. And those conversations can be huge. Those conversations can be the future of the company in a private case. Or it could be a feature, yeah, motion just because of a conversation about sharing information. So it is interesting to hear that you encounter the same problems in your world, that those conversations don't happen and that can hinder some things.
Well, when you're on a Zoom call and you've got, you know, 20 or 30 other people involved in the call as well, I don't think you're as open to discussing some of the ideas that you have. And they could be brilliant ideas, but you're just not prepared to have them in that open dialogue. And so having that in-person opportunity where you can pull somebody aside and bounce ideas off them and get their feedback to prepare you for that larger conversation, Zoom doesn't afford you that same level of confidence that you're seeking that feedback and sometimes criticism on, so that you can improve upon what it is that you want to present.
That's a good point. You probably don't hear as many criticisms, like useful, useful critical feedback that you might hear in person. Just because, yeah, you're in a 20-person Zoom call, only one person can talk at a time really. And then everybody else has their mic muted, if they even have their camera on.
Yeah, yeah. And I find that the majority of the conversation is, you've got to unmute yourself.
Yeah, yeah. That's the new standard hello for us now. It's just like, sorry, you're muted. Or, can you hear me?
Yeah.
That's how we, that's, that's gonna, I'd like to see if that translates into, once we get out of the offices, out of Zoom calls, into actual person. Walking up to a human being and going, can you hear me?
Someone's got to make a t-shirt of that.
That's, yeah, yeah, for sure. So what about in terms of policy, in terms of what actually areas of focus are the types of discussions you're having? What, you know, with the pandemic, I'm sure a lot of things have maybe come up in the last year, last 12 months, that weren't necessarily on the docket, on the table before. Is there anything there that you found yourself having to pivot a little bit in terms of changing your area of focus?
The pandemic is only one part of the discussion that is really taking us down different paths or different rabbit holes. It was never anticipated to the scale of what we're currently experiencing. It's now coming up to a year that Manitoba's had its first case positive, March 12th. I remember it very vividly. And back then, a year ago, we, okay, couple, three months and we'll be out of this. And it's now a year later that we're still having this conversation and wondering when we're going to be able to get back to some new normality in terms of our everyday events. The pandemic has been one of the things that has really taken us off course in terms of dealing with civic issues. I mean, when I say civic issues, and again, I'm talking about, you know, garbage pickup, snow removal, safe streets, policing, fire, all of those civic areas of responsibilities. And I'm finding that we're having more conversations around social issues. Of course, what happened in the United States with respect to George Floyd and the social justice movements that have risen really have had an impact on a lot of our discussions this year, and of course, the pandemic as well. The results of increased homelessness and poverty, mental health and addictions. And I'm glad that we're having a lot of these conversations now. Again, they are more social issues and mental health and wellbeing is more of a provincial type of jurisdiction. I'm glad we're having those conversations here at the city and hopefully can work collaboratively and in partnership with the province on these issues. But when you drive by or you come downtown and you drive by a bus shelter and you're seeing people living out of these bus shelters, you're seeing the scattered needles on the ground, these are all issues that regardless of the level of government that you're involved with, we have to pay attention to it. It speaks to us, who we are as a city, if we don't pay attention to it. So to pass it off to another level of government saying it's their responsibility and kind of casting a blind eye, I don't think is responsible. So these are the conversations that we're having that I never thought that as a civic politician I would be involved with, but here we are.
And are those conversations, do you think those conversations would have been happening anyway, regardless of the pandemic, of the introduction of the virus?
Well, certainly the pandemic is a health issue, but it's had an economic impact. So when we look at businesses that have shut down, when I look and see our downtown and the amount of people that are not there, that are working from home, you know, on social media, the other day, somebody suggested that the city maintain its workforce from home and reduce its operating costs from renting out space. And I responded to that, you know, an individual said, you know, other cities are looking at this and looking at reducing the cost and things like that. But my response was, there are businesses downtown that depend on us as office workers coming downtown. It's all part of the circular economy and buying lunch, shopping during our lunch hours and breaks, bus fare that is derived from people who are taking the bus to come downtown, that's revenue for the city, parking lots, all of those things, businesses rely on it. So to simply say, well, everybody work from home or a good variety of people work from home, it doesn't solve a problem. I think it creates unintended other problems that we need to address. So, you know, I'm very much in tune to the economic impact that COVID has presented, even though it's a health response. You know, we need to look now as we are moving to this vaccine rollout and towards herd immunity, how are we going to restart our economy and how are we going to support small businesses to ensure that they can recover and start to draw people downtown? And that's the other thing in terms of policing, that we have a safe downtown. So the aspects or the concepts of community safety or crime prevention through community design and ensuring that social impact is there where we have people downtown based on going to a Jets game or Gold Eyes game or attending a concert or a festival of some sort. We need to get people downtown to support those businesses that are downtown. And that's, that economic activity is a sign of a healthy city.
Absolutely. Sign of a healthy city. I believe that it's a sign of a healthy culture above all. The economy is a reflection of how strong the culture is in so many ways. Just having, yeah, we could all work from home and it would probably make sense economically, we'd have less property, you know,
Rental.
Rental downtown and less traffic and all that, but we wouldn't have the same culture. Do we want to be the NHL team that doesn't have the block parties anymore? Do we want to be the city that doesn't have Fringe Fest anymore? Do we want to be the city that doesn't have Folkarama? And you know, like, it's a big implication to start thinking about.
And again, we touched upon it earlier. I mean, working from home means you're going to be involved in more of these Zoom-type calls where you don't have that ability to network and to have those offline conversations and substantive type of relationships, as opposed to superficial technology type of interaction.
It's both a saving grace and this like barrier that is...
Yeah, no, and it served its purpose in terms of keeping people apart and isolated to minimise the spread. But as we reach that herd immunity, I would like to see us getting back to those in-person type of interactions where we are having those conversations and building those networks.
I hope so. I think, I feel like there's an appetite for people to wanting to get out and see people in person again. Is there anything about the community in the city that has surprised you with how the people have reacted to the pandemic? Both either a good or bad initiatives or just any kind of interactions you've noticed in the community that's been surprising to you?
Well, from a positive perspective, I'm really glad with the amount of people that have taken to the outdoors and again, are investing in our environment by being outdoors, reducing the need for cars, that are getting involved with, you know, whether it's walking on our active transportation trailways, taking their pet out for a walk or walking with their spouse or children. We've seen a resurgence of people wanting to be outdoors because of the safe activities. Yesterday in our council meeting, we talked about our golf services having a record in banner year because it was one of the safe things that people were able to do. So the investments that are now being made in outdoor activities, I think, is something that both surprised me and has, you know, made me very excited and hoping that this trend continues. Last year, we did shut down a variety of different streets and neighbourhoods, allowing pedestrians and cyclists to walk and cycle on them without fear of vehicular traffic up and down those busy streets. So I'm hoping that we can do it again this year because I think it was a huge success last year. Minor inconveniences for some of the residents on those adjoining streets, but for the most part, the residents that took to the street were overwhelmingly supportive of its usage in that fashion.
Definitely seeing a lot of people walking dogs all the time when the weather is good, when it's not minus 40 outside.
But this winter hasn't been that bad. I mean, I saw that cold snap for two weeks. I mean, we've had very, very mild conditions and according to my standards anyway, I think it's been a good winter.
Do you believe that there are any challenges that COVID has presented to Winnipeg specifically?
Well, of course Winnipeg being a cold winter climate city, there are challenges around lining up outside of businesses and establishments. That, you know, my parents are going to be 90 this year in October. I would hate to see them waiting outside, you know, to get groceries and, you know, other shopping or appointments that they may have.
And they're also the last people to know how to use online pickup very well.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And my heart aches for seniors in that regard. The isolation that it's created for some families, you know, knowing how vulnerable our seniors are from a health perspective, but also the vulnerability of isolation, I think, has really impacted me or, you know, I've recognised as a huge impact for our seniors community and for families in general. That I'm hoping, again, as we move towards herd immunity, that we can again be, you know, together in common spaces and in person. So that's one of the things, and it's not by any stretch of means specific to Winnipeg, but it's one of the things that I recognise has been a huge challenge here locally. When I look online or on TV and see the intolerance of some people, that's concerning as well. You know, I was watching a news story the other day and the rise of anti-Asian, you know, because of how the COVID or coronavirus was described. And I saw something that just made me sick the other day where, and it was in the States, where a large gentleman pushed a 70-year-old woman and she hit her head on the newspaper box and had 11 stitches because she was Asian. And again, that sentiment, and I mean, it made me sick to my stomach, absolutely sick to my stomach to see something like that. So those types of intolerances, I just, you know, we're all in this together. We need to have some empathy around each other. And I understand the frustrations that there may be and whatnot, but we are all in this together and we need to work towards that common decency and showing compassion to one another. And that's one of the concerns that I have, that I'm hoping that as we, as we do reach our herd immunity and this temperament dies down, that, you know, they'll look back on some of their actions and find it absolutely as deplorable as the rest of us. And that they will be held accountable for their actions during this time as well.
Definitely. Whenever I see stories regarding, obviously, Asian-American violence, it hurts me as an Asian-Canadian. And my parents were immigrants from Hong Kong and they're in their 70s now. And I worried, you know, I was already worried about their vulnerability to the virus. I was already worried about their vulnerability to the cold and the conditions. But luckily, I feel like I haven't heard from them at least specifically, or even from some of my friends, that there's been too much of that here in the city. I've seen reports of that happening all over to a crazy amount in Vancouver, in B.C., and definitely in the States. I'm not sure what it's like in Winnipeg currently.
Thankfully, we haven't seen that here. I mean, we've certainly experienced other issues here that are maybe not specific to that as COVID. But again, when you see it on TV, because, you know, unfortunately, there are people that will adopt that mentality. I don't want to see it trend or spread, certainly with what we've seen with George Floyd and Maud Aubrey and Greta Thunberg in the States and the rise and the polarisation of race in the United States. And to some degree, we've seen that here in Canada, not to some degree, we've seen that here in Canada as well. The Proud Boys are here and we can't deny the fact that they are here in Canada. There's lots of snowbirds that go down to the United States and winter in places like Florida, Arizona, Texas and other southern destinations. You know, they're influenced by that media and influenced by that market and come back here and maybe bring that sentiment. And it's not just seniors that go down there, it's, you know, other individuals that, you know, are watching, you know, different news stations that perpetuate this. We want to be in a situation where we can agree to disagree politically, but race should never be an issue or part of those discussions.
And unfortunately, like America's greatest export is their entertainment, is their culture. Just by proximity and just the noise level, we can't help but be affected there. So I find it's good for us to realise, you know, we're not as bad as a lot of what you're seeing in the States, but we're not unaffected. Like we are dealing with the same problems. We, if anything, they can be our canaries in the coal mine and tell us where we should be concerned in our country.
We do have a lot of work to do to support our indigenous communities though as well.
Absolutely.
From that perspective, there's still a lot of work that needs to be done, and our newcomer communities as well.
A question that I like to ask people because I feel like it gives me an interesting insight in just how people see the world. Was there a moment where you were going about your day or your workday or your personal life and you just realised, ah, this is all, this is completely different now what I have to do? And it's kind of weird, like it's, was there anything like that that stands out to you?
Yeah, I guess it would be the fact that my wife is in your home again. Going out somewhere, and you've got somewhere to be. No, just realising how different my schedule was over the last year. You know, I was out pretty much six nights a week, trying to keep Sundays as a day of rest. And realising, you know, with the onset of COVID and restrictions that we had back in April and May, that was really, okay, this is lasting a little bit longer than I thought it would. You know, it's cold and flu season. Didn't realise to the extent just what the impacts were because again, locally, our numbers were very low. We didn't have our first death, I think, until, until May or June, if memory serves me correctly. But then, you know, once November, October, September, October, November started to come, we started to ramp up and see the numbers that we had, that was really an eye-opener as well. And very scary in the sense of how real the virus was and wanting to do everything to protect and maintain that distance from my mom and dad, you know, like I said, they turned 89 last October, they're turning 90 this October. And mom and dad are like, can't you just come home? We haven't seen you and we haven't seen the kids. And it's like, no, you know, I'm still coming into the office, I'm still seeing, you know, back then, I still had appointments to see people and things like that before we really shut down in November. But wanting to keep them safe, that's when it really hit me just how real this virus was and the potential for it to cause real harm in terms of death and tragedy to my loved one.
And how's the relationship with your wife right now?
She works one week at home and one week at the office.
Okay.
She works upstairs and I work on the main floor. We'll break for a half hour, grab lunch and then go back to our respective offices at home. 5:30, 6 o'clock, we'll see each other again for dinner. So it's still very much that same worker relationship where we don't see each other through the day, but at least we get to spend lunch hours together and then our evenings together because of the fact that I'm not off somewhere attending an event or bringing greetings or what have you. So we've definitely caught up on all of the Netflix, I think at first, this time last year, we were getting into Tiger King.
Oh, Tiger King.
And Amazon Prime, you know, we did that on the evenings.
Do you have Disney Plus? Do you have Disney Plus?
No, not yet. Our kids are grown, so we haven't had Disney Plus, but I crave. But, and this is something I normally wouldn't do because I'd be out six days. So it was an opportunity to catch up on some TV viewing. But of course, with all of the reading and research, that's part of this job and keeping abreast of all of the issues in the community, that's certainly the priority.
Absolutely, absolutely. Coming out of this pandemic, what is something positive that you think for society or for... Coming out of this pandemic, what is something positive that you think for society or for yourself that we will have gained, some positive nugget that we will have gained from going through this experience?
Well, I know for myself personally that I won't take things for granted as much as I did before, that there's an assumption that it's going to be there tomorrow, so you can leave it. So it is that message of Carpe Diem sees the day. I'm glad that people, and again, I talked about this earlier, that are embracing the outdoors and not taking that for granted, that they're not pitched to a TV screen or a computer screen or a gaming screen, that they are actively playing and being active outdoors. So I'm hoping that trend continues and that we don't take that for granted. You know, our environment is the only one that we have. I think that's a positive and I hope that trend continues. The other part of it is the financial planning piece. That, again, in terms of this health issue that has presented itself, it has definitely had an economic issue. So I guess the last thing you want to hear a person say in terms of economic recovery is to spend your money wisely. You know, as economists, we want to hear spend, spend, spend because that's going to create jobs and things like that. But I'm hoping that people are a little bit more diligent in terms of planning for contingencies and having financial certainty because we can see the devastating effect that it has on families and further marginalizing those that are socially, economically challenged in our communities. And hoping that, you know, by preparing for events like this, even though you never know when they're going to happen, that we're a bit better prepared so that if there is a disruption in your earning, that you're not going to be as adverse to the effect as this pandemic with how quickly it came upon us has presented marginalization of those that are socio-economically disadvantaged.
It's definitely an event that really magnifies the socioeconomic gap that just has naturally appeared over decades, centuries. And yeah, from an individual standpoint and hopefully from, for myself, from a federal and municipal standpoint, I hope that we are able to work on better supporting or closing that gap and better supporting those people. Because, you know, I actually did get laid off at the beginning of this pandemic in 2020. But I was, I was, all things considered, perfectly fine for the year, you know, I had to adjust some of my routines. But I can't imagine for anybody less well-off, just the lifestyle changes they had to go through, the things that they just couldn't deal with anymore. It's mind-boggling and it's saddening. Having a society and having a government that's there to support everybody would be a refreshing experience going forward.
Yeah, I completely agree. And, you know, we need to support each other as well. You know, I've always had that saying in the back of my mind, if you want to go fast, go alone. But if you want to go far, go together. And it's all about, you know, our community banding together to work together to have our common desired outcome of having a successful community.
Well, thanks so much for joining me. It was so much fun to talk about some of these social issues that Winnipeg has been facing amidst the pandemic.
Thank you for reaching out. This has been a great conversation, some very challenging questions. But, you know, I really enjoyed having those very organic type of conversations. And again, thank you for reaching out. I greatly appreciate it.
Well, anytime, if you want to drop by anytime, or if your buddy Brian wants to come on anytime.
I'll let him know.
Let him know. That would be fantastic if you could send a recommendation this way.
Will do.
That's it for this week's episode. I'd like to thank again councillor Marcus Chambers for joining me. It was truly an honor and a pleasure to have a chat with him. If you've made it this far, hit that like button and hit subscribe to see more content like this. And while I've got you here, I wanted to let you know about a new show I have. It's a show where my friends and I learn how to make cocktail drinks live on Twitch. It's a lime press kip, not a lime press. It's really a fun time to have people in the chat watching us live. I'd love for you to check it out and have some fun with us on Friday evenings. And with that, thanks so much for watching. See you next time.